Like you said earlier, as long as you're on the right mind, minds will help out.
All right, it is six o'clock. We will call this December first Delphi Council meeting in four. Could please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Well, being here, Professor Price, can you please call roll? All right, very good. Thank you. First item of business is going to be the meeting minutes from November third. Let's get a motion on the floor. Is there a motion to approve? Myers, all right, I have a motion and a second. I'll open the floor for discussion. Any additions, subtractions, corrections to the November third meeting minutes? All right, here now, all in favor of approving the submitted public council meeting minutes for November third, signify by standing aye. Motion carries. All right, first item of business is going to be the request to reappoint Ken Walton to the Carroll County Economic Development Board. I believe we have Dr. Norman here. I don't know if you really, if you wish to speak, certainly you can, I think. Uh, pretty common thing that would.
We would, uh, we just.
We would love to have Ken back on.
Okay.
He is a great contributor and uh, has great insight, so we would love to have him back.
Can't see it because I'm looking through my glasses, they're different.
Clean them off.
Nobody tells me that stuff.
With water, not milk.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Norman? Ken's done a great job representing the city on the board. It's a busy board, so good to hear that he's still wishing to step up and be a part of it, so. That's what I'm being ready to ask. So if there's no questions or comments, we will vote. All in favor of reappointing Mr. Ken Walton to the Carroll County Economic Development Board to yeah, to represent the city of Delphi, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Closed. Good. Thank you, Dr. Norman. I'll text him afterwards and probably still on a beach somewhere.
I think he is.
So he'll be happy to hear that news.
He's somewhere where it's warm.
Yeah, he usually is, which is a smart move, right? Especially right now with what we have outside. All right, moving on to new business. Uh, first item of business is going to be proposed resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen. Big one, it's approving the award of the municipal solid and waste contract for the recyclables, solid waste. Uh, we've had several meetings on this. We did a great job of our due diligence of looking at different contracts, having different bids submit submitted, and uh, we had some things touched up with the contract that was submitted, which you guys now have in hand. So if you had a chance to, first, let's get a motion on the floor. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen, which is approving and awarding the municipal solid waste and recyclables collection contract? I'm motioning for you. I have a motion, is there a second?
Do you have it?
I'll second it.
All right, for the record, Denny Meyer. All right, I'll open the floor for discussion.
Been talked about quite a bit in the past, eh?
Yeah, so for the, yeah, no, so for the public, this was a, an effort by the, the council and city administration to kind of see where we were with bids and uh, allow others to bid, uh, wasn't intent to do anything other than just make sure we're being responsible with our tax dollars, and this bid came in as the lowest bid and uh, for Treasure Price, I believe that the rates themselves will be pretty close to what they are now, correct?
The rates will not change.
Be the exact same thing.
Yes, nothing will change, it will stay the same.
So good news for our citizens. Um, I did a comparison with other cities the size of Delphi, and what we pay for our waste removal is, wasn't even in the same ballpark. So they do a good job. Uh, we called in for things that are, that are on it pretty quickly, so happy to have that and happy to get this, get this done and um, at a cost that's reasonable and fair to the citizens, so. Any discussion from the board?
How long was that contract?
It was a two-year initial contract, which is common.
And it was very comparable, and back a little lesson was last year because we put it out today.
Yeah, and the new contract or the, the language did, did stay in there for spring cleaning, correct? Which is, you know, that's a good thing that we have, the chance for people to set all their collectibles out and chance for them to get rid of them to where we pick them up on one given Saturday, and they usually pick up quite a bit, so. Okay, any further discussion or questions from the board on proposed resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen? Okay, here none, all in favor of approving the proposed resolution twenty twenty five fourteen, it's approving the award of the municipal solid waste and recyclables collection and disposable service contract, signify by by standing aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Here we go. On the new business, so I'll let Court Treasurer Price uh, give a brief explanation to proposed ordinance. Point twenty five dash sixteen, which was a, an ordinance that we discussed in last month's meeting, was amending the fire hydrant rental fee, which in previous years was one seventy-nine, we had a hundred and seventy-nine fire hydrants, we upped the funds to two twenty, because we now uh, have two hundred and twenty uh, fire here, so two hundred and twenty thousand was allocated for the council portion that goes into the operating budget. That was passed on all three readings. Uh, no language within the ordinance itself changed, we just got turned around on our numbers a little bit, so we're going to do a consensus from the board that the corrected number now is, Court Treasurer Price?
It was, we had the wage and salary ordinance, it was fourteen and fifteen, and this hydrant contract was listed as fourteen as well, so it technically should be sixteen. So that is the only change, is that the ordinance number will be twenty twenty five dash sixteen instead of fourteen.
Does change anything other than the number that will go into the books? That need a consensus vote or a action item vote?
I think probably just directionally, the.
Yep, so again, this is not voting on the approval of the ordinance, it's already been approved and passed, this is uh, amending the ordinance number, so first of all, should get a motion on the floor, is there a motion?
Make the motion to change the date or the, the site of number. Or what?
Or the sorry.
Or the, or what Clerk Treasurer Price explained.
Okay, so changing it from what it was with fourteen to the corrected sixteen. All right, I have a motion, he made a motion, I'll put Spencer as the second. Any questions for Court Treasurer Price or myself on that matter? This is a bookkeeping, bookkeeping record, uh, during last year's audit, we learned that they watched the, and it was just a happens all the time, it's just a clerical error that we got corrected, and the books are very streamlined per ordinance, so it's easier for for us to research things by the number, so this just makes it fluent and, and look better and easier to dive into if needed. Any further questions or comments from you?
Are we going to do this three readings since it is ordinance? Or just the one?
I believe that we had.
Because we've already passed it with, with that, but I don't know, since we're correct, technically we're amending the actual title itself.
The title is the same.
Well, that, well, it's part of the, it's part of the title, the number would be.
This is just a correction of the clerical.
So we only just gave the one in.
Yes, okay, yes. All right, I have a motion, a second, all in favor of amending the previously passed ordinance, which was passed as twenty twenty five dash fourteen to the corrected ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next item of business is going to be proposed ordinance point twenty five dash seventeen. This is an ordinance that we already discussed last month on first reading, it's public record request policies and request form, is there a motion to approve? So move. Have a motion or a second?
Second.
All right, I will open the floor for discussion, just a refresher, this is passed on first reading in November. Essentially, it's some changes that we can do for, to make public request records easier for us to one, uh, document, keep them streamlined, and also for response times and how we present them back to the public, it's all state statute, the language matches state statute, it matches other cities, it matches uh, everything, you know, for transparency, we're trying to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing, and Amber and our legal team did a great job of making sure all the correct languages was in there, and this will be easier for the clerk's office, as well as myself, so Clerk Treasurer Price, do you have anything on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, here none, is there a motion to approve? Proposed ordinance twenty twenty five dash seventeen on second reading, an ordinance that requests policies that public record policies and request form, all in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Closed. Carries. There's a motion to approve proposed ordinance twenty twenty five dash seventeen, an ordinance for public record request policies and request form on third and final reading. All right, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion, comments from the board? All right, here none, all in favor of approving proposed ordinance twenty twenty five dash seventeen on third and final reading, an ordinance regarding public record request policies and request form, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. All right, very good. Next item of business is going to be the twenty twenty six observed holiday schedule for the city of Delphi. First, we'll get a motion on the floor, is there a motion to approve the submitted twenty twenty six observed holiday schedule? All right, open the floor for discussion. Same holidays as we have now. Clerk Emanuel, they're reviewing them. Same as every year, there's, we'll do the, the meeting needs separate, but same holidays that we've adopted in the past and observed previously, so. Any questions on the proposed twenty twenty six holiday schedule? All right, here none, all in favor of approving the twenty twenty six observed holiday schedules, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Close. Carry, that kind of business is going to be the proposed twenty twenty six meeting dates. Again, a motion on the floors or a motion to approve, so. All right, I have a motion and a second, same thing with this. Holiday, of course, that date will be changed, there was two that rolled over into the, the next month, which I believe happened this year as well. So that will reflect on the submitted meeting dates. Any questions or comments from the board on the proposed twenty twenty six order works and common council meeting dates? All right, here now, we'll call a vote, all in favor of approving the twenty twenty six proposed common council and board of works meeting date, signify by by standing aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next item of business is going to be setting a date for the special meeting, uh, for the twenty twenty five year end portion of wrapping up items that need to be finalized, I think you have the date that we did this last year. This will be considered a public notice, correct? So, yeah, so.
Last year on the, me, the thirty.
Yeah, that was last week. I'll let the, the board kick around some, some dates for the special meeting, tie up twenty twenty five year end items.
What was last year's date?
Thirty.
We didn't usually do it right close to.
Yeah, so this year, Monday and Tuesday, the twenty ninth and, and seven thirty. The offices are open both of those days, if you want to do it at very.
Yeah, because we're off now, that we had a New Year's Eve, we're off the thirty first, so we got Monday, the twenty ninth, or Tuesday, the thirtieth, correct? And it wouldn't do much good doing it the week before, because there's still things that's going to filter in.
Ball down, it's Christmas.
That is Christmas. So there's still things that will be filtered in, and we're trying to get wrapped up and closed up for twenty twenty five.
Thirty is good.
Thirty, for you? Yeah, Spencer?
Yeah, thirty.
Okay.
It's just Tuesday.
So Tuesday, December thirtieth for the twenty twenty five year end special meeting to wrap items up.
Are you guys going to do it at five? Would you get, or would be cut to close for you?
I'll be on vacation.
Then you go with it at five, can we, can we do it at five?
Do whatever you want, there's no board of works meeting, so.
What do you have at five? It helps me, yeah.
Five P M.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's call a vote.
Uh, I'll make a motion, I'll make the, the year end meeting Tuesday, December thirtieth at five P M.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor approving Tuesday, the thirtieth at five P M, signify by by standing aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. That is all the business matters we had for this evening, quick announcements, I did not announce this in the board of works. I just got the email prior to the meetings, the city of Delphi was awarded their community crossing grant point twenty six. We asked for a little over a million, I think it was one point one million, uh, we received a grant for nine hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, which is eighty percent of that grant. Uh, the city will pay a little under two hundred thousand, so we're sure that we take advantage of NDOT's grants such as that, we got some, some items we can tidy up with the funds, and we're thankful for NDOT, uh, awarding us another year of funding, so exciting news, I just literally just got this from the governor's office about ten minutes bef, fifteen minutes before the, well, probably longer than that, but anyway, exciting for our street department, we move forward, trying to get the roads where they need to be. Thank you to the Delphi Street Water and Police Department for their efforts during the first storm. Um, it was a busy one, a lot of, a lot of cars sliding around, have eight inches of snow, and the city did a great job of keeping the roads open, which was a task, because it seemed like every time that they would make a pass, every time they come back, it was covered back up. So a lot, a lot of work goes into that, and they did a great job of making sure that people still had a path to travel, so thank you to everyone involved with that, and uh, here we are with storm number two already, so.
And all the sirens.
And the sirens go with, yeah, so uh, thank you to Delphi Main Street for their efforts for the monument lighting, it was a good event last week. Had some kids from the elementary school as a part of it, it was a, just a neat event, bringing everybody back to, to that tradition that we haven't done for four years, and you can see it probably from the moon, it's pretty bright and it looks great, so thank you for everyone involved with that. Christmas parade is next Saturday, or this coming Saturday. Um, same location, same location for staging, same route, same time, I don't have the theme, but I put it online last week. So hopefully we get a lot of floats and have a fun, uh, festive holiday parade, I know a lot of the businesses are going to be open afterwards, doing some, some Christmas matters, I don't think Santa's going to be in town, I just talked to him earlier. So he did say that Doyle is on his naughty list, and I'm trying to work through that right now, but it's not working. Well, I will continue to do that, so.
I talked to him.
He gave the best presence, I wouldn't least of knowledge.
All right. Court Treasurer Price, any comments? Okay.
You're not going to mess up the numbers, Ken.
The problem was.
I was waiting for something to come flying across.
Problem was, with, so I will clarify with the whole ordinance thing. When we did the wage and salary ordinance, I did those in my office, because we do those every year in our office, but the ordinance that our legal team did, I, I didn't send the wage and salary ordinance number to them, so it was my mistake not submitting it to them, so they were still with that number, thinking that that number was the next one, and that's how the numbers got messed up.
So you just won't do that again?
Huh?
You won't do that again?
Yeah.
We see. If you remember last year, we had this happen with the resolutions, because we would do a resolution for the fire territory, and then try to get incorporated, so it, it's an honest mistake and they are plenty busy in the clerk's office, so no harm done, and so that's a number for bookkeeping. We are back on track now, so thank you, Court Treasurer and her office for all the work.
And I will say, I, so we can put this out there, like, I, you have invitations, we're at the Chris, City Christmas Party. I just wanted you to know, we chose to do something different this year, while we would like to support all of our businesses and be here for all our businesses, it's, we're actually going bowling. If we had an open bowling alley here, we would totally stay in Delphi to do that, but we just thought we'd do something, something different and fun, instead of just having a meal and then just getting up and leaving, it's just kind of a way to be able to socialize with one another, you know, because usually we're in meetings and we're you know, doing this all the time, so it's just a little bit of time to relax and have some fun, so we totally would do it here in Delphi, but we don't have a bowling alley, hopefully one of these days we will.
Maybe we just block off the street.
We, we do have a bowling alley, per se, but.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, we'll cross speakers, hopefully one of these days, you know, we'll have something like that here that we can, you know, I mean, guy's the limit, we could do ice skating ring one of these days, we could do, you just never know.
Well, I say, I'll sign do it right now.
Well, we could.
Just saying.
I just wanted, I just wanted to put that out there.
I was already practicing in D.
Yeah, so, so everyone knows that it's not because we don't want to support any businesses here, it's just because that's what we chose to do, something fun. We're talking to a few of the employees, I said, hey, you know, do you want to do something different? Rather than just sit at a table and just eat and then get up and leave, to do something fun, just be kind of socialized, and just, so, that was what was behind the decision.
Is there prices or something that you bowl three hundred or something?
For like, as many gutter balls as you can get, or?
Well, I'd like. Makes you try harder, or?
All I know is, it, it just, it sounded like a lot of fun, so after talking to a few of the employees, they thought it would be, do something fun, different, whatever, so.
Can you bring your own ball?
Yeah, yeah.
If a forty year old, mama has his own shoes.
Sure he does, sure he does.
You do, don't you?
Yeah, oh, yeah. They're about forty years old, but it's okay.
We'll see.
Right, any more comments?
Uh, so kind of mirror off of what you said about Delphi Main Street and the lighting of the monument, phenomenal, loved it, great turnout. Nice to see some festivity, come back to the city with lights, extra lights. Uh, want to again thank the street and water department, come out and helps, uh, pile salt. There was a mess on Saturday, so it was much appreciated to get them out and help, uh, thanks for all the guys and yells that worked, I would say to you that might as well, if it was a, a mess. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Officer Justin Wilson for, uh, serving the community of Delphi for twenty, over twenty-two years. Uh, he retired, so much appreciate it with him a lot, so much appreciated for him, and I hope he enjoys his retirement. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry.
Those look nice, yeah.
They're bright.
Yeah.
They're really bright, they look good.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Brett Perez Price for your leadership and countless hours since you've been here, President. Much appreciated.
Thank you. I'll, I'll say that, that, that goes, uh, both ways, because it, it takes a village, it takes a team, and we have a good team that, there's nothing easy in the world of government, in today's world, we, we come to work, do our best, but at the end of the day, it takes a team and
Teams are my scariest.
We, we get beat up pretty good, which every municipality does, but we're doing our best and trying to do our best for every citizen that we serve, and I think we have a wonderful administration, wonderful staff, and they boots on the ground, put their, put the work in every day, so thank you for that. That, that goes both ways, I appreciate you guys as well. Any further comments from the board?
I just like, thank God for blessing us all.
Absolutely. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving?
Four of the round.
Always overcook them, and I got one right. I tried for many years, and I finally got one right.
Amber?
No comments from me, just want to thank everybody for their support as well from the oil game, we're always there for you guys, so.
We're pretty, you're part of that team that we just mentioned, it takes a lot of work to, to just get meetings like this, there's a lot of behind the scenes logistics and work and everything involved of the world of municipal operations, so thank you for all your work. Couldn't do things without you, so thank you.
Chief, that thank you goes to you and your team too.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Other comments?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Hey, I'm Tessa Barton, and I'm here over on Riley Road, so first of all, I want to thank everybody for the quick response to the snow. I had no problems getting to work in the mornings or getting around, it was really nice. And, uh, the tree ceremony, uh, I wasn't there for it, but the results looked amazing, so thank you very much for coordinating that. And uh the tree ceremony, uh I wasn't there for it, but the results looked amazing. So thank you very much for coordinating that. Um so last time we were here for the city council meeting, um I was really happy to see that we were engaging a solar provider with Varigi. And um I was curious about getting some more information for that. Uh just because uh I volunteer with a couple of different groups that are in the solar renewable energy space and we've had some issues where some cities have engaged solar providers that aren't delivering on what they're promising. So um I was hoping to get some more information about uh what Richard Allen is providing.
Yeah, yeah, so we uh Rick.
Over here.
Yeah, so all we did last month was agree for them to do it basically in audit. So all these, what they propose is not the panels that you'll see up in cornfields uh or anything. These are to offset the municipal buildings that we own, the 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 uh utility rates. So these aren't gonna be cornfields full or anything other than they would be attached or in the general area on the property that would be directly tied to that building. But they, the only thing that we have approved is for them just to come look at what we have. So they haven't had approval for anything to do anything other than just look at our buildings, see if it was even possible cuz it may not be. Uh we haven't signed that paperwork yet. So we're at a standstill with um working through some some language on making sure we're we're covering our end on it, but as far as them doing anything on that part, it hasn't been approved. Basically just saying, sure, uh and the county approved it to for for the courthouse, all their buildings, just basically an audit to see what they have. And then they'll submit a report to us, but after that, um the council will then take a look at the risk reward. Is it something that's worth it? Is it worth? Is it gonna offset i- is the cost? But at this point, for your question, nothing has been done at all. Um but that's what the initial agreement will be is just that they come into the city building and look at our utilities and see if it's a possibility for them to to cut down our utility costs. So that has not been signed yet. It's in the hands of again, our legal team making sure that language is right, but really that agreement is just saying we can come look.
Well, I'm really excited to see it. I think energy resilience is really important for us rural communities. Um I was also uh at the school board meeting and they had mentioned several uh really expensive remodeling um projects that they have going on with Camden and the elementary school. Or is there a way like we can like combine or like maybe work those projects in together so that we can get like a bigger discount on them?
No, so we we can. We are part of uh so the short answer is the school is their own entity. They have tax funds that are for their school. We the city can help them uh in in different ways. One of those is by housing, right? Each student that goes to school, uh the there are a number attached to each student. I think it's thirty five hundred dollars a kid, right? So the the more housing we get, obviously helps our schools. Our numbers are down in every school in the county. Um and that's reflective of different reasons, homeschooling, several different areas, but that's how we can help the school. We're also part of a regional board card, R B O R, which is ready fund initiative. So that is a way we can help the city, the high the Carroll County E D C. So we've worked together on the 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 short answer is we can help them, but as far as joining funds, that that's not something we can do. We can work together on projects through the R B O R board, but it's all through the state of Indiana. It's all to the I A D C. There's a lot to it and um but again, we love our schools. We'll help them any way we can, which sounds like a neat project that we're we're excited about. But as far as funding, the their funding mechanisms and the structure, how they fix the infrastructure in our schools, update their schools, all that is is within their school board, their funds. But it's an exciting project. Um nothing is cheap in the world of when we try to update our our buildings, schools, equipment, right? So anything that we can do, we'll certainly review it. But I think they're at the early stages of that. A lot of progress has been done, but it's exciting, so.
So as far as um you know, infrastructure support, they're like, are we working on making like the city more walkable as that we are getting more houses in our communities here, especially like directly across from like the high schools?
Yes.
At that busy intersection?
Yeah, so our C C M Gs, every road that we do, where we do in the sidewalks. We're making them A D A compliant, which we had to follow N dot specifications. So every road we do with our C C M G grants has to be built according to N dot specs. So those sidewalks are all brand new. As far as adding sidewalks up to that area where Bowen is, is that what you're referring to? Um the housing.
Bowen State.
So we have talked about uh future plans of how can we put a sidewalk to where the kids can have a sidewalk to crossover, so they're not crossing four twenty one. The city of Delphi has four safe crossing routes. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but there's four zones. The kids are given the first day of school, the parents are given of areas that they can walk to where they're not. Uh one of them is North Street that that takes the divide up there that takes you down to is that right? It crosses over to elementary school and then it goes up to the high school. So they're they're called safe zones for kids. So we have three, I believe, three or four. Uh but as far as putting sidewalks in that area, once the expansion of the houses comes, absolutely. We've already looked at that. We reviewed it. Um the housing project is the developers. The roads and infrastructure on outside of is ours. We have looked at it and there's a lot to it as far as engineering and utilities and all that just already there. But yes, we are looking at ways that we can get sidewalks for I think it's two weeks ago, I was coming down the road. It was dark and there was a kid walking on the edge of the four twenty one. We don't want that, right? We we don't want any child out by a busy highway. That area is already busy, congested, so that's why we make sure that the school puts out those safe routes for kids to walk, but.
And they do a great job like at that intersection when the schools are coming in and out. So I just wanna throw that out there too.
And N dot, uh I had a meeting with N dot uh two months ago and they agreed to do a traffic intersection study uh just to see what can be done. Chief Mullin and his team's out there trying to, it's a it's a busy area at three fifteen, three o'clock with packers coming out. All our kids are kids sprinting across the road. So they agreed to meet with me and report. We had a great discussion. Uh the good news was they said, yes, we'll do a full intersection study to see what we can do. The traffic light used to be there when the Hartland was being built. What I found out was there was several in fifty P I, which is a crashable injury during the time that the stoplight was up. More more crashes than when it was. So given those numbers, uh that's what how N dot does their their studies and where they put stoplights. So they are still looking into it. They've been uh very willing to see if there's any improvements. They'd be happy to do so, but we'll support them and if they want to, then by all means, because we know it's an area of concern. All that comes together with if they decided to do something up there, we can then tie sidewalks into it. By all means, it's something we would look at, so.
Great.
Yeah, it's it's a busy area. I sit up there a couple of times and just scratch my heads to there's there's not a lot of patience, right? There's people trying to to find the gaps and there's kids sprinting across the road to go to subdivision. So we're always looking at areas of areas to improve and N dot has agreed to let's take a look at it. So that's that's good news.
Oh, great. I like the direction we're headed in. Thank you.
Thank you. How about the little man back there? Got anything?
Minecraft, so.
Minecraft? You you got anything you wanna say to the city? You come right up to the podium. Have your chance. We'll make you famous.
Or spread this old Minecraft thing.
Y'all remember from last time, Lauren Murphy, M U R F R E E. Um may get the fault if you all sadly overeaten. I apologize about the flock cameras. Um but I did have some questions. I wanna get a public record. Just to have enough transparency. Um how does the data sharing function between counties for flock cameras? I did notice it seemed like the one outside of C V S has been moved. So I wanna know if there's a data sharing agreement for the flock cameras amongst counties?
Uh C V S.
Yeah, like the one, there used to be one, I believe, outside of C V S unless it's been moved or somewhere else.
We didn't have one out of C V.
Okay, so maybe it was a different device than that was.
Yeah, that was it. I was gonna say we don't have.
Okay, let's go to know clarify that. Um.
But as far as the data, the data sharing and stuff like that, I I could kind of speak on it, bring my knowledge on it. It's actually um through the flock camera safety systems themselves. So when counties uh purchase the camera or lease the cameras, I should say, uh they're able to access that data and then be able to access those cameras as well, as long as the agency that is leasing the camera gives the the okay to do so. So there's usually a lot of uh inter-agreement with the agencies, but sometimes they can say no and just be their own little secluded area.
Okay, do we have agreements with other counties for Carroll County then? Or how does that function for Carroll County?
Um or so the county does not have it right now. Uh the city has an agreement with other cities and counties, yes.
Okay, so does that mean that they could access that without you all's knowledge or do you all get notified?
So when someone accesses our cameras and runs stuff, they have to have a reason and uh explanation kind of why they're specifically looking for something. Um and then if it like like say if we have a hot file for someone that we're looking for, like a wanted person or whatever, then I'll flag it. It's been ran and we can see who ran or we see where what time, date, and I believe what agency ran it.
Okay. Do you get it retroactively then after it's been run?
Yes, we can go back and look for it.
Okay. So I clarified. So I was wondering if they if they are applying to like access the system and you're having to trigger them to like get them access or if it was they're being.
So when when they get access to the system, there's an agreement of which cameras are allowed to and then we they have to send a request to that agency and whoever's charged that agency will say, yes, you can have access, which generally most P D's say, yes, you can have. As long as you're a P D agency, you can access the cameras. Um sometimes some agencies are very not forthcoming with sharing, so it happens, but in Indiana, we've been pretty good, but this, again, this is a nationwide system. So um some other out of state jurisdictions don't like share.
That's fair. I was just wondering if there's any um protections in place for sharing that data amongst counties that Carroll County has in place.
So if the agencies are running the information, like say we put in a stolen vehicle and um it's hot filed for us and someone runs it. Um there is a concern of if someone's running it like fifteen times in like two minutes or whatever. If it's that same person, then we can call that agency like, hey, what's going on with this? Um because obviously we we wanna keep, you know, data secured um and make sure it's an actual officer doing it, not someone that's got like a computer stolen or, you know, worst case scenario, they got.
So it would show up as a red flag that it.
It's not red flagged until we they run it and then we have to retroactively go back and see what's going on.
Yeah, it's happening.
So it's not like live time notification. Perhaps you. That's.
You're doing a really good job.
Okay, alright.
I was gonna say, it's wonderfully clear.
Yeah, that's like I I can I remember most of this stuff, so.
You're good. Um so I know my last time I had Paris mentioning of like the suspicious vehicles, suspicious movement or function of this. Do you know how that model's trained?
So the suspicious vehicle function, so the only way we can actually look at it is if we enter in a vehicle that we're looking for.
I'm just wondering actually the model. Do you all know, is there any indication from flock how they train that model to assess that it's suspicious movement?
It's, we don't have the suspicious. It's literally just a, it's a twenty four seven camera running. It's not just uh like a motion activated camera. It's there and it's and then it picks up on this plate that goes by. Um there's no suspicious.
It doesn't change other than it's reading the plate.
Yeah, no, it's it's still, it reads the plate, the whole, the whole, I think you were trying to like suspicious of like the like speed or something of the vehicle or like what it's doing.
Yeah, so like I know that some of the flock cameras have like a me- a mechanism, my knowledge, that they can like they have an A I model built in as far as like the lidars game.
Yeah, we don't have. So for us in the county, we don't have that function. It's literally just a plate reader, yeah. So that's the simple side version is it's just a plate reader.
That's helpful, no. So I was wondering, since the last time I mentioned about um something suspicious movement or something brought up. So I was I was confused, like is this from just a suspicious car driving through town and how is it triggered as a?
So the only way that's triggered up is if we go through and we look at it and like if the plate, if we enter the plate, it's gonna flag the plate.
Okay.
Um the vehicle wise, so we can pull up like say if it's a red min- minivan, we can go up and say what red minivans and it shows us all of them. And then we have to figure out which one we're looking for, but it just it's no differentiation of it.
That's awful. Thank you. Um I know I mentioned about um was mentioned about children and abductions, that kind of stuff. So I'm just wondering, has there been been any attempts at prevention efforts related to children and online meetup that was mentioned last month? Because I'm wondering, this is an issue in Delphi. Is there any?
Nationwide.
It's it's a, there is a nationwide issue with it. A lot of it has to do with social media and some of it, I mean, I'm gonna be quite frank with you, Snapchat's a big problem.
Oh, yeah.
Um just because the message delete and it's a pain. We can get the messages back, but it's a pain. Um but that doesn't help us like right now when it happens. This is like days or, you know, whenever they decide to respond back to the subpoenas that we sent off. I think, Dave, do you have any item? I don't know.
I understand your question. I think I kept was always working to boil these types of uh situations. And so they have people who are are working on trying to uh engage these persons that are trying to solicit children. And they're actively involved in things like that. Different departments are, we don't have that because we have the manpower to be able to do something like that. And that is that the question you're asking?
I was more focused on the prevention, so the such not the criminal side. Criminals are obviously outside of our control, but the children are engaging.
So we try and like with the schools and we be cooperative with the schools and stuff like that, because obviously most of the children go through the schools and apps and stuff like that. Um we try to like, hey, give them the warning of it, but at the end of the day, we can't fleece each individual child. That's that's up to the parents. So we try to give educate. There's educational pamphlets and stuff out there for them. It's just whether or not they're taking it back in. We can offer and offer and offer, but I can't, we can't force it.
Oh, I understand. I was just wondering if that was something that could be.
Yeah, I believe the schools pass that out and um.
Imagine like me, a a program or something might be more engaging than a pamphlet or something that.
Yeah.
Like make it clear.
I guess schools try to address that issue everywhere.
It's a good thing to watch it. If they watch the movie Sound of Freedom, because that shows the child trafficking and how they do it.
That's something that's interactive or so that like makes it clear, you know, pamphlet of teenager might not.
Well, I mean, even I think, I know when uh when social media starts first becoming real big, they used to have, you know, speakers come in and engage the students and you know, but we all know how kids are, you know, how it was.
Yeah, probably needs to be like a computer program or something. Yeah, okay, that's all I question. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Alright, here none. There's just one last motion.
Motion adjourned.
Motion's our second.
Someone says something, so I go to work.
So is it?
Any more or second? All favor adjourning this December first. Personal meeting signify by standing and I.
Aye.
Posed. If you do that, we can't cuz we only have thirty.
No, 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 it doesn't matter. No, some majority is still gonna be go.
Alright, this meaning is it.